Jesus.
I did it. I was messing with it. Okay, Naomi, back to you.
Okay. We'll be hearing again from Bo Bass of Bass Projects. You may recall last time Mr. Bass presented work for a new red car development on 14th Street. And this time he'll be presenting before the joint meeting with final plans for a new red car development at 1650 Euclid. He presented a sort of overview of that last time as a preview. So he has his completed proposal and that's the overview. In addition, I'll be giving an update on our art conservation efforts. That's my update.
And just a reminder on process during these joint meetings when we have a private percent for art presentation, he'll give the presentation Q and A with him and then it'll first go to discussion with the public art committee. And Lori, you can lead that discussion and then there will be a motion to either approve or whatever. And or basically to make a recommendation to the arts commission for approval or whatever motion that you'd like to make. And then it goes to the arts commission for commission discussion and then they vote to approve. So just a little refresh on the process. Let's see here. So wanted to give a brief Art of Recovery update. We've been doing a lot of internal work over the past probably six months. Things in the city in finance and procurement are moving really slow. And so we were having these issues where artists were having to wait months to be able to get a contract set up. So we've developed a new system. We did a call for production partners, which we think will be, which will be most, a lot of the people we've been working with already. So the promenade, Main Street, the business districts, community groups. And they'll basically kind of go under a blanket contract. And then whenever an Art of Recovery project comes through it, it will will just assign it to their contract. So we don't have to do a separate contract each time. It's, you know, it's not the most glamorous of things, but it's going to help us tremendously to be able to get these projects on the ground out on the street a lot more quickly. So we did the call for production partners. The deadline was last week. And then we relaunched an updated call for project concepts. So any artists, we encourage you to send artists to apply for different projects. At the concept level, it's a pretty, it's a pretty loose. It doesn't need to be fully fleshed out. It just needs to be the kind of concept and then it will get advanced or not. And then by the panel and then we'll work with them to pair them up with a production partner on the production of the project. So that is getting started now. We've had a couple of really great projects recently. We did the, we partnered with McCabe's Guitar Shop to do Americana in the Park, which was the kind of replacement for Jazz on the Lawn. It's in Gundara Park. And then we also supported the Broad Stage doing a project in a parking lot downtown, Birds in the Moon, which is really neat kind of opera in a shipping container with some really interesting technology components to it as well. So now that we're able to have events again, we're looking forward to supporting different events through Art of Recovery in the coming years. So, you know, the first year we did not have a lot of opportunities for performing arts and we do now. So we really want to encourage different performing arts based events as well as continuing to do public art and more visual art oriented projects as well. Any questions? Lori?
Just wanted to go over how the artists would know about this, like what's the communication strategy?
So we announced it in our monthly newsletter, ArtsMO, that went out last week. We have a social campaign coming up and we'll start promoting it through city channels more broadly as well. And we encourage you all to spread the news.
Thank you.
Yeah, this may be tangential, but see, what's the status of the Miles Playhouse, speaking about performances, are they, how are they moving forward at all?
They're not. The staff and budget for the Miles was cut completely, so it remains closed. And we're embarking upon a planning process to kind of think through how we're going to use that facility moving forward, given our limited staff and financial resources.
That's unfortunate.
Yeah, I mean, we're hopefully when the budget comes back and the revenues return, we'll be able to get the budget back. But we, that was one of our biggest cuts that we had to take last year.
Thank you.
And I'm putting here in the chat the link to the project concept form, so you can share that with your networks. And then last is an update on the City Hall mural project. The subcommittee has now met a number of times, which Francois and Michael and Deepa are all on. And so there was a council action to form an ad hoc committee of council members. So it's Oscar de la Torre and Christina Para, Christine Para are in ad hoc committee and they're to be liaising with the arts commission and the landmarks commission on this project. And so it, it's November meeting, the landmarks commission are selected two people to be on their subcommittee and one alternate. And so right now we're kind of working through internally what that's gonna, what that structure is gonna look like. And there's a lot of considerations with the city attorney's office because of the legal landmarks, you know, what goes before them and what might go before council. So there's a lot of details that need to be sorted, sorted through as we, as we get this, this moving. So things are moving forward with it, but we're, we're just taking some time to make sure we get the structure set up properly so that we could be. And there's a covering that's going up, wire mesh that you can somewhat see through. You can also, it's four feet from the wall, so you would be able to walk in and view it from like within the little hallway, I guess, if you will, that's created by the curtain. And that should be installed in the coming year. Any questions or anything to add, Francois, Michael or Deepa?
Well, I mean, I know that's, I don't know if everyone did, but a lot of us got emails with attached position papers, if that's the right way to phrase it, from individuals and representatives from the conservatory. So it sounds like, this feels like the conversation is a mist in the, in the community at some level.
Yes.
And my understanding was that there would be some contextualization put up along with the cover, something, something up for people to read.
We do have a sign that's been up actually for a number of years. And I think it's, people just walked by it. They didn't, they didn't notice it. But now that there's this kind of, this entrance, if you will, that's being created by the covering, we're going to put it right at the entrance. So people will read that as they walk in.
That's great.
None of this, but different, I can't find the chat feature on my screen where you said you put something. Miles, someone direct me to where I might find the chat.
The center and then you have to click on the little
Lori, Lori, he's not
Oh, sorry.
He's not logged in as a moderator.
The moderator chat.
Naomi, can you help since you're logged in as a presenter?
If you look, Michael, if you look at the top right, there are three icons. There is a red hang up the phone, then there is a bunch of tall thing. And then the next one is called moderator chat.
Moderator chat, okay. And I don't see what, Shannon, you said you put in that link for the, the Art of Recovery. I don't see anything in that link yet.
When you're in as a presenter, you don't see the moderator chat. You can talk to the moderators by typing in that area, but you're not
Well, yeah, okay, I was just responding, Shannon, you said you put in a link to that proposal, the
It's in the backstage chat. I'm sorry. It's not the moderator chat tab, but the backstage chat tab.
Oh, I thought it went to the panels. I'll email it to you.
Okay, Miles just
I just sent you the moderator link if you wanted.
Moderator link, but
I'll, I'll email the link.
Okay, all right.
This technical feedback.
Fun times.
Okay. All right. So then that, so that's our report. If we want to move on to new business. Lori, do you want me to start with the boards and commissions consolidation?
Sure. Yeah, just to keep everyone up to date with, with what's happening on that. That would be great. Thank you.
Yeah. So the city council has another ad hoc committee that's looking at the city's boards and commissions and looking at consolidating. Human Services has like 10 that they staff and they experienced significant staff cuts, so they're not able to manage all of them. So they're looking at maybe possibly consolidating commissions. Arts Commission is not under consideration to be consolidated. However, they are recommending that it go from 11 members down to nine. There is also a proposal on the table to bring it down to seven, although when the city council discussed it at their meeting last week, a lot of arts commissioners had contacted them saying, we, we think we're fine with it going to nine, but it shouldn't go down lower than nine. So it's looking likely that in December there will be some action about what's going to happen with the boards and commissions moving forward. And will be, hopefully the, the recommendation will be to keep the arts commission to nine members, which may impact the number of members for the public art committee. We're, we're currently down one member. There, there are nine members on the pack. It may need to come down to seven, given that the arts commission is coming down. So, but we will keep you apprised of that.
Any questions or other thoughts about this from anyone?
Well, that's a question, I mean, full questions. I mean, is the, is the applications for commissioners still open, given that they haven't, that we know we have currently four openings, but, but if there's two to be appointed, because right now we're down four commissioners, is the application system still open for people who may want to apply to be a commissioner? It is. Let us share the, let people know if you care to.
How many public art committee members do we have right now?
We have eight. And there's nine allowed.
Okay, so it might drop down one.
Yes.
So we'll see. Yeah. There were, there, yeah, we're sparing you a lot of history in here if that was kind of crazy, but
Some drama.
Some drama, like thoughts of consolidation with other commissions that made no sense at all, but luckily that's not under consideration. So, okay, so we move on to the next item, which is the future meeting format and discussion topics?
Yes.
Okay. So Shannon
Do you want to take that, Lori, or do you want me to?
Let's do that together. Why don't you take the lead on it, Shannon?
Okay. So we just wanted to open up a conversation as we start preparing to come back more regularly. You know, how to, if we want to, there are things that you want to get on the table that you'd like to discuss at future PAC meetings. To start to have a conversation about that, as well as, you know, we've kind of taken to doing these joint meetings when there was something that was going to go first to the PAC and then to the arts commission. I think it's helpful to do it as a joint meeting because I think that the arts commissioners hearing your subject matter expertise is really valuable for, for the discussion. But that we don't have to do it that way. We could do it where it's separate, where you do the recommendation separately. And then at the, and then Lori brings that forward during the arts commission meeting. One of the reasons we do them joint as well is so that we don't make the presenter do it twice, which isn't that big of a burden to do if you want to, if you prefer to keep those two separate.
Well, it also affects, I'm, I'm back to the, right now there's like three commissioners also on the PAC. So that might be adjusted if the number is adjusted too, right? I mean, it's back to the other conversation. Because the question is, those of us who are commissioners also would potentially get to hear the presentations twice as well if we're on the PAC. So I mean, I'd advocate doing it once jointly.
Other thoughts?
I think it's nice to do it jointly as well. It gives us a chance to interact with our more esteemed colleagues on the
It seems, it seems like a good thing to have a joint meeting if there's going to be overlap between what's talked about.
The only question is whether there's an advantage to having time to talk among ourselves in addition to a joint meeting. Yeah, but I guess the inefficiency of having the presenter do it twice is
But Lori, so yeah, good point. I mean, would that mean that when we, the PAC is discussing it and we sometimes get into some rigorous discussions, the arts commissioners will be sitting there silent hearing our process while we make a recommendation to them, correct? That's what's going to be
Yes, yeah. What I'm, what I'm concerned about is that it would really minimize our conversation. We, you know, if we would be, I'm afraid that we might feel some pressure to get through it very quickly. And some people may not speak up or feel free to have, you know, just, just brainstorm or throw out ideas that aren't, you know, fully thought out. Which, you know, in our separate meetings, we can be a little bit looser with and explore things and then come back with the consolidation of our ideas to the commission. I mean, I'm just, yeah, it's just something to consider.
That's, that's excellent consideration.
So we don't need to make that decision right now. And I'm wondering if there may be a way to do both, because I really do like the interaction also. I think that's really important. So let's think about that.
Quick suggestion came on. Would it be feasible that the public arts committee reviews the documentation ourselves? And then the entity presents it jointly, but we have a chance to review documentation on our own and come up with questions that may then filter over to the live, the meeting with the the proposer, so to speak. This came to mind as a thought.
Shannon, that would mean getting the documentation a little bit earlier, but maybe not that much earlier. Maybe we continue to have our, our meeting just before the joint meeting that we could, you know, start a half hour earlier and have a half hour to hash it out before the joint meeting. And then to, to put together questions that we might have for the presenter.
Yeah. And just to refresh your memory, we are, you do get the, the first presentation, the preliminary presentation is just for you. And that's when you ask questions and you give them feedback or when they come back with the final presentation. So like you did last, last meeting, you met with Bo, Bo for the preliminary presentation. He did not meet with the arts commission. He just met with you all. And then he took your feedback and now this is the update that is going before Bo.
So maybe we could just take a few minutes in our meeting before the joint meeting to take a look at that and see whether any questions or, or feedback that, you know, whether we felt that they met our, our questions or feedback or, you know.
Yeah. I think we could, I think that's possible.
That might, I think that would satisfy it for me. What, anyone have, have thoughts? Deepa, Francois, Summer?
That sounds good. This is Marnie.
Great. All right, cool.
Yeah, I think what Lori suggested sounds good. Good idea, yes.
Okay. And, and then I'd encourage everyone to think about discussion topics coming up. You know, as we start meeting again and things that we want to be able to, that we would like to get on the agenda going forward within our, within, within the confines of our, of the parameters of our responsibilities.
Right. And we talked about maybe doing some kind of joint retreat with the arts commission to, to help the two bodies kind of gel a little bit more and just develop, strengthen the relationships between the two. Once we get to, we're back to meeting in person more regularly, I think that would be really a helpful thing to do.
Yeah, I do too. And to, to tease out, you know, how, how we work together.
Yeah.
Something, you know, just reminded myself, because I attended those upfront task group meetings with the, when the commissioners were hashing all this around about. And we did, you know, support, we have so many committees on the arts commission. But one of the things that they brought up was their perception about the, I'll use, I think the word, the expertise that sits on various committees like this. I mean, and we do have, you know, architects and the like. So I think maybe as we move ahead, we can also consider what expertise may be needed to support the public arts side of this, you know, as well, I mean, or recommending, you know, people, as things might get shuffled around, but also to strengthen, that's my word, just for the sake of it, the what the commit, what the committee can do.
As I recall, we had quite a bit of discussion around those areas of expertise on sort of the last round of when we needed to add members to the committee.
Yeah, we did.
We did. Yeah, we went, yeah, we went through what, what we started with the PAC and the PAC identified the, our areas of needs. And then we went through that with the commission.
I'm just reminding myself, that was one of the, the, the city councils' issues when they spoke about the arts commission in general. So I think more we could, you know, make them appreciate what we do is, would be great.
All right. Well, we are almost at time here. Before we leave, Deepa, do you want to give an announcement of your show?
I had a question. Is there a cap on the number of public arts commissioners or is it, is it the, you know, is that only for the arts commissions?
It's nine, but it may need to come down to seven because the arts, if the arts commission comes down to nine.
No, I'm talking with the public arts commission.
So, yeah, so the number of members on the, the number of members of, on the committee, on our committee is tied to the number of arts commissioners. That's why it would affect it.
And the number of arts commissioners that are appointed to the committee might also be adjusted.
Right.
I actually don't think that would change.
Okay.
But we, we can check, but I, I don't, I don't think it would.
Okay, this is a question.
And look back at the bylaws. So, okay, let's see, is there anything else that we wanted to cover, any other announcements? And in coming meetings, we've got no announcements and we don't have a, a next meeting date, do we?
It will be, we're, we're still on a quarterly schedule, so it would be in February. And the but every February it conflicts with, is it President's Day or Martin Luther King? So we'll have to look for a new date in February.
Okay. All right, great. Well, thank you very much. I think it's time for us to adjourn and move into the arts commission meeting, so. Hang on, everyone.
Hello, thank you. I think we're about time to start the joint, special joint meeting, Santa Monica. The public art committee and the arts commission's special meeting. And I'd like to begin with a roll call of the arts commissioners.
Sorry, Michael, let me just make sure we've got a quorum here.
Yeah.
We're at five. So Jeff was on here and now he's gone.
I'm on, I'm on, Shannon.
Oh, you are? Ah, I see you. So Mary Elizabeth is in as a attendee. Mary Elizabeth, if you can hear me, check your chat. I sent you a chat with the link and also an invitation to interact live. So you can either accept the invitation or use the link I chatted you.
Still waiting?
Yes, she just chatted me back, so hopefully she'll
Okay.
Thank.
All good.
And I see Laura Georges. Is that someone from Bo Bass's team? Yes.
Hello and welcome. And also, listening in is former arts commissioner and current landmarks commissioner Roger Gessner. Hello, Roger. So Shannon, let me know when we're ready for roll call or Michael.
I'm just waiting, yeah, we're waiting here.
Why don't we get started? I'm troubleshooting with Mary Elizabeth.
Okay, that sounds great. So, so please, a roll call of the attending arts commissioners?
Very good. Good evening, commissioners. I'm going to begin with the arts. This is Nathan Burn Brown, the administrator for cultural affairs. I'm going to begin with the commission. Yes?
Hey, Nathan.
You can hear me, good. Michael, Commissioner
Michael, Commissioner Barra, Vice Chair Commission? Vice Chair. Commissioner Chalice? Commissioner Chalice? Commissioner Jackson? Commissioner Michaels, I believe she's present, but has got some technical issue at the moment, right?
Yes.
Commissioner Subramanian?
Yes.
Commissioner Swimmer?
Yes.
Commissioner Yehia? Yehia?
Here, yes.
Commissioner Zadikian? Commissioner Zadikian is not present? All right, and now I'll call a roll for the Public Art Committee.
Commissioner Subramanian?
Yes.
Commissioner Swimmer?
Yes.
I'm hearing an echo. I'm hearing, I'm hearing a recording playing.
Commissioner Zadikian is not present? All right, and now I'll call a roll for.
Someone needs to turn that off, I think. All right, so now I'm going to jump into the, to the, to the. Committee Member Bar?
You're in, Mary Elizabeth.
Okay. That was beautiful.
Committee Member Bar?
I'm here.
Committee Member Darty? Not present. Committee Member Gittleman?
Present.
Committee Member Pugh? Not present. Committee Member Subramanian? Yes, of course. And Committee Member Vaughn?
Present.
Okay, thank you very much.
I'm here too.
And, and of course, Committee Member Barra and Yehia are, were already both counted, so I've got you present.
Thank you.
Thank you so much, Nathan. So I'm going to turn the discussion over to Shannon and Naomi, who are going to lead a discussion and leading to perhaps some possible action from the Public Art Committee. And then if so, a recommendation to the Arts Commission. So Shannon and Naomi.
Great, thank you. So you've, you'll be receiving a presentation from La Basque Projects. You may recall you approved a different project a few months ago. And at our last meeting, the Public Art Committee's meeting, Beau gave a presentation, received feedback from the PAC members and has updated the presentation and is now presenting to you the final proposal for the private percent for artwork at the location. And so this will, first, after Beau's presentation, we can ask questions, you can ask questions. And then the PAC will have a discussion and make a motion to recommend the Arts Commission. And then the Arts Commission will have a discussion and make a motion to approve or accept the PAC's recommendation or otherwise. So with that, I will turn it over to you, Beau.
All right, hello everybody. I'm trying to actually turn on my video and audio right now. Can everybody hear me okay?
Yes, sir.
We love you.
All right, sorry, I've, this is the fourth online conference platform I've been on today. Everyone has a different one. So I figure out where all the buttons are. Let me share my screen with everybody quickly. Okay, can everybody see? I can no longer see anybody else, but.
Yes, sir, you're good.
All right, so today we're going to be talking about 1650 Euclid Street. Some of you, we presented the building and got some feedback on thoughts in terms of placement. Just to give a background, 1650 Euclid Street is a three-story creative office complex, a little over 39,000 square feet with subterranean parking. It's going to have a full rooftop garden and sort of Native California cacti landscaping plan throughout the project. So we did an artist search, really looking for somebody to provide sort of very organic forms and sculpture that we felt would complement both the building and the landscape plan. We wanted the artwork to feel sort of organic to the project. And we selected LA-based artist Alma Allen. And we actually have two site potential proposals, which we'd love to get feedback on from the Commission. So our artist selection process, we presented nearly 10 different artists to the developers, in this case, Redcar Properties. The Redcar team and our team narrowed the options down to a couple finalists. And we selected artist Alma Allen as sort of our final artist and asked him to propose some specific concepts, whom which we chose. One of the reasons we really liked Mr. Allen's work, the fact that he, his history was actually working with salvage materials and hand carving everything. He's got an interesting story, you know, from overuse and repeated injury from all the hand carving. He's no longer able to like use his hands as, as his tools. But all of the sculptures still have that very organic hand carved feel to them, even though they're all fabricated now. His work feels very organic and expressive and nature, and that was sort of what led us to sort of select his work. The proposed sculpture, which we'll share momentarily, we just, you know, both the developer team and our team really liked that it felt very in touch with the native landscaping and the building plan. So just to get a sense of what the building looks like, you can see sort of the rooftop garden. There is a planter along the front and along Euclid. Now, this Euclid on this street, you know, I didn't include was actually an overhead map, but Euclid here dead ends. So it is not a fairly, it's not a very high trafficked, foot traffic or auto traffic, except for the handful of offices on this street. This is the rear of the building, parking through the alley. Another angle from the corner of the project. And then some samples of, of Mr. Allen's work. Obviously, a very accomplished artist exhibited at the Whitney Biennial, is represented in Los Angeles by Bloomingdale and Culver City, has had a long list of museum exhibitions. Do this and some samples of his work, just very hand carved feel, even though they're at scale, very organic forms. Past work examples. There's a lot of smaller bronze, gold plated work. And the proposed concept for this project, this is a smaller maquette, but it is literally titled, not yet titled. Their proposed sculpture will be bronze, will be 132 inches, 11 feet in height, including the base. The base is actually integral to the structural support of the sculpture. The base will be made out of stone, looking at a little over a 1,200 pound installation. And there are two proposed concept locations. We, I think, have a preference, but we'd love to get feedback from the Arts Commission. One, if you can see my cursor, this is the Euclid sort of sidewalk. And there is a planter along the front of the project, you could see in the renderings. And so one option would be to actually land the sculpture in the planter box. So it would literally become part of the landscaping. So it looks something like this. And this would place it right along the streetscape. Or the other option would be, which I think is our preference, would be to put it into the center of the plaza. Where it has a more prominent piece in the courtyard, yet is still visible from the side, from the sidewalk. So you can sort of see the landscaping in the front is intended to really be more observant. And it's not intended to necessarily screen out of the plaza and this being 11 feet tall would still be very prominent even from the sidewalk in the street. Rough costs are, our public places budget is just shy of $160,000. We actually expect this budget to go significantly over this. We're still getting final fabrication costs, but we actually expect this, the artist commission fabrication cost to actually exceed this fairly significantly. But we're looking at budgeting for insulation in both locations. We're going to need engineering reports for, you know, both seismic and for, to make sure that this sculpture is mounted properly. A budget for conservation and maintenance reports and obviously consulting fees. But we do expect this number to go significantly over the mandated budget. In terms of timeline, we originally presented in August. We're here, we are today November. Hopefully upon approval, we'll begin fabrication in January and then be looking to install this when the building's complete in August and September. And that is sort of where we are. You know, we'd love to hear feedback or any questions you might have.
I guess we'll start with the Public Art Committee?
Yeah, absolutely. Go for it, Lori. Go ahead.
The Public Art Committee members.
This is Summer. I, I do have comment and preference on that location. I worked for the builder that did the, the building next door, so I, I understand this street and how it, it really just isn't a footpath, it, foot traffic street. And I can see that it, in the front, I just don't see how very many people would be able to enjoy it in that, that landscaping in the, the first position that was proposed. This current, the position shown in the court, middle, center of the courtyard in this image, it's, it's a much more prominent location where it, this piece could actually be enjoyed. Beau, would you agree that?
Yeah, I mean, I, that's, that, I really appreciate that, Summer. That, that is definitely our preference to have it in the courtyard. The only reason we really proposed the sort of planter location was if there were concerns that it wasn't visible and accessible enough. But certainly, you know, our preference is to put it in the plaza, in the courtyard. This is, again, I appreciate your feedback. This is not a street that has a tremendous amount of foot traffic. It's not, you know, we're not off Third Street, we're not in a, also did not just foot traffic, but auto traffic as well. It's, it's unless you're coming to the office here, or one of like five offices buildings on this block, you're not coming down the street.
It, it, it won't be seen by anyone but the employees, so to, to try to, you know, give it more of a public face, it, it's just not worth it. So for anyone, for the other members here that aren't familiar with the, the street, I thought I would just bring that up as an important point.
Thank you, Summer. I, I, I agree, even, even without that consideration. I think it gets lost when it's put in the planter. So even stepping away, when you look at the, at the piece in the plaza there, you can see it. It, it needs that space around it and people can walk around it and see it from all angles. I, I agree, it's a much, much stronger location. Michael, Carol?
Yeah, I agree as well. And I was wondering, probably would cast some interesting shadows at certain points in the day. I don't, where's the light coming from? I mean, with, do you have a sense of that? Casting shadows, it'd be kind of interesting.
Well, this image, we're facing, would be facing west. So I'm trying to do the, do the calculations on where the lighting would be. I honestly, with the, with the buildings, I really, I really couldn't say which.
Yeah, in the open space, on the spaces, I'm agreeing with others that even within open space, if there, if and when shadows occur, it'd be more visible in this location, in my opinion.
Yes.
Actually, even more than the shadows, I think it sounds like the reflections might be interesting. With the, you know, this, this, that refracts the, the sunlight in some way. I mean, it's, it looks shiny. And so being in the middle of the courtyard, you could get some interesting patterns on the floor. I'm curious about how that would work.
The shadows shown in the rendering are probably pretty accurate for somewhat midday because it, it actually does faced east as the sculpture is east of that, that bridge. Walkway behind it. I think, I think kind of slightly northeast. So, so it would be, it would be more shaded, more often shaded than, in, in shadow than not in that location.
Great. So any other comments or should we go ahead and, and vote on our recommendations? Yes, oh, Deepa?
It's the same thing, the location. So the sculpture is about 130 feet tall is what is mentioned.
132 inches, so 11 feet.
Oh, I see, okay, 11 feet. So is it tall enough? I mean, if you could, if it's tall enough to be viewed from the, the outside, you know, sidewalk? And maybe if the, the landscaping can be cut short to make sure that the culture is a little more visible from outside, you know?
Yeah, that, that is a good point. It is definitely tall enough. I mean, this, this planter box in front that's visible, I believe is three and a half, four feet. So it's definitely visible over the top. This being 11 feet, and this is, you know, being the sidewalk, but that is a good point. We could certainly lower the landscaping in this front section to make the sculpture more visible as well.
Yeah, thanks.
This is Marnie.
Good morning.
Oh, yes, lovely, thank you. The position within the courtyard, I think it, it brings a really nice interplay to the edges of the landscaping. So it becomes very conversational from different vantage points. As compared to if it was embedded, it would be, it would be more immersed. So just appreciating sort of the possibilities of sort of the proximity and how it, how it looks very conversational.
I like that, I agree.
Can I ask a question? Were your cursors for that area, do I guess the right thing? Could people sit there? Would that be appropriate? Would that be, that, is that a little bit of a area where people could actually sit for a minute or two? Or that, where your cursor is?
Around the edges here, these are all sort of seated, integrated benching all around the courtyard. Yeah, yeah. So again, that's sort of why our preference is to land it here, because that becomes sort of a central feature where, you know, I imagine if you're sitting outside for lunch in our beautiful Santa Monica weather, you know, you're able to sort of experience and sort of engage with the sculpture.
Nice.
Great. I, I, I think it's a beautiful piece and it's great. The color is clearly putting more than required. So is anyone from the Public Art Committee wanting to make a motion in terms of recommending that we, recommending to the Arts Commission that this project be approved?
I'll make the, this is Summer, I'll make the motion to recommend approval to the Arts Commission.
Second?
This is Marnie, I second the motion.
This is Marnie. I second the motion.
Great. All in favor?
Yo, me?
Yes.
Do a roll call.
We need to do a roll call. Okay.
Nathan?
Hello. Okay, the motion by Vaughn and seconded by Gittelman to accept the private developer proposal as presented. And recommend to the Arts Commission that it be approved. Let's begin at the bottom. Let's see. Committee member Vaughn.
Yes, that was at the top in the alphabet, but anyway.
I mean, the bottom of my list. Committee member Subramanian. Committee member Vaughn, yes, she's the, she's the motion maker. So I presume that's committee member Subramanian.
Yes.
Committee member Pew is absent, I believe.
Excused.
Committee member Gittelman.
Yes.
Committee member Doherty, I believe is absent. Committee member Barr?
Yes, again.
Committee member Baroff?
Yes.
Committee member, committee chair, Yaya.
Yes.
Motion passes unanimously.
Thank you so much, Public Art Committee, and now the Arts Commissioners. Have a chance for discussion of this unanimous recommendation from PAC. And first, any questions for Beau? From any of the Arts Commissioners?
I have a quick one.
Please, please go.
Just out of curiosity, Beau, you mentioned that cost overrun. Can you just mention briefly? Overruns are not dollars, but in what aspects the costs have overrun?
I think from when we initially looked at this to now, cost of materials have gone up, we've scaled the request of the piece from a smaller size to a larger size. So stretching the bronze and the plating to 11 feet. It's gonna, it's gonna overrun. From, I have a sense of a number, but it's gonna be, it's significantly over, but fortunately for us. The developer is really excited about the work and the artwork and is happy to extend his budget over. But what the mandated costs.
Great. It doesn't affect us. I was just curious. So it's grown in height, et cetera. Good to know.
Yes.
Thank you.
And of course, those, you know, none of those costs impact the city in any way. It's a, it's a private project, so. They have far exceeded the. The mandate that they needed to and they, you know, anything else that they wish to do is completely their prerogative and it's quite a generous. Quite an exciting thing they're, they're doing.
Yeah, very much so.
Any other discussion, questions or just thoughts in general? Well, we have a unanimous recommendation from Public Art. Is there anyone who would like to? Move that forward to a motion in the Arts Commission?
I do.
So is that Michael?
Either way, yeah, I put, I'm willing to second it or propose it. Either way.
I'm sorry, and who is the other person? I can't see these little thumbnails. Was that Deepa?
Yes, that was me.
Okay, so a recommendation to. Accept the recommendation from Deepa, seconded by Vice Chair Baroff. Nathan, would you do the honors to give us a vote?
Yes, indeed. Beginning again in a reverse alpha order, Commissioner Zadikian?
Yes.
Commissioner Yaya?
Yes.
Commissioner Swimmer?
Yes.
Commissioner Subramanian?
Yes.
Commissioner Michaels?
Yes.
Commissioner Jackson, I believe is not present. Commissioner Chalice, also not present, I believe. Vice Chair Baroff?
Yes.
And Chair Masucci?
Yes.
Motion passes unanimously.
Thank you all. Thank you both, Public Art and Arts Commissioners, and we move forward to one last thing, which is not an action item, but a report. On the conservation and collection management. Process and projects regarding public art, so. And thank you, thank you, Beau, very much.
Thank you. I didn't want to cut you off, but Commissioner Masucci, thank you very much for your time. I appreciate the feedback, everybody.
Thank you. We look forward to it. Congratulations.
Thank you.
All right, so next up is our update on the conservation budget and the. Projects that we've done over the last two years. As noted in the staff report, we're kind of. Getting things back in order in preparation of us meeting more regularly and in person again. And one of those things is to. Reorient you all to the budget. It's been a while since you've seen the budget because of the meeting restrictions that we've been under. So this, this meeting is about the conservation budget, which is funded through the private percent for art in lieu fee. And is not under the jurisdiction of the Arts Commission, though in the past, we've just kind of given you highlights. But this is a really significant part of our program, and I think it's important to be transparent. About the costs associated with that. So we're giving you a full conservation budget report and at our next meeting. We will review the general public percent for art budget. So Naomi, if you're ready, I'm going to start sharing my screen.
Great. So just a little rewind, the in lieu fee that she mentioned. Is coming from developers who choose not to place art or to create cultural facilities. There, that's their options. And the fees are being pooled into the Cultural Trust Fund. Which funds conservation projects. And we will go further into collection care in our next session. As collection care in general is being covered through public percent for art, so. Conservation, we're calling. A mixture of large scale refurbishments, urgency treatments, some planned maintenance and special projects. So the other items in collections care would include. Other maintenance, cleaning, forage, installations, deinstallations and that sort of thing, and we'll cover that in the next session. So thank you. Shannon, next slide, please. Amongst our major projects, although several major conservation projects are on the horizon. Because of capacity and slow downs, they have mostly been. For these past two years. Hearing a little bit of an echo, I don't know if anybody. The one larger planned project that we've accomplished in these last two years. Combination of conservation, refurbishment, refabrication and minor relocations of the tables. Which comprise Alan and Alan Wexler's Tables of Content at Dennis Park. And in particular, you'll see in this picture, the tree table, which was. Constricting a very mature pine tree, was taken apart and relocated around a newly planted tory pine. At another location in the park. So the pine does look a little weedy in this picture, but it's going to be growing fast and. We're glad to see it. It's new location. In addition, the bridge table, which if you've been to the park in the last 20 years, was located over one of the little streams. Was relocated to a dry area and its design adjusted to add some safety railing elements. In response to concerns raised by the public landscaping division. These were made in consultation with the artists. These minor repairs also were made to splintered and rough areas of other. Benches and tables and overall, the whole set was oiled. So that project is now complete. Next slide, please. And then under emergency treatment, we have as this slide illustrating May and Birch, Rachel Birch of May and Birch Conservation. Doing continued emergency work to address graffiti on the Whale of a mural and on Bridle. Which are on either side of the Ocean Park Avenue underpass. By Third and Fifth Street, which have been tagged an average of over four times every year. Emergency conservation expenditures since fiscal year 1920 have totaled over $50,500. Anti-graffiti coatings on both murals have proved to be of mixed utility. The one on whales is actually a little more. Titled because of the texture of the surface. Uncoded areas are likely to suffer worse outcomes, but tags in general have been difficult and time consuming and costly to remove. We've reached out to Public Safety's Gang Prevention and other departments to track these occurrences as many of the tags are gang related. And they've increased some patrols in response and we have discussed placement of security cameras, et cetera, but. Basically, the. Conclusion has been that graffiti accumulation is inevitable and seems to be somewhat on the rise. Several works in Palisades Park have also suffered vandalism and graffiti over the last two years. And here you see gestation three, which has required remediation. In addition, in Palisades Park, the Totem Pole and the Arcadia Bandini Memorial. Have also been hit. So the graffiti on gestation three was executed by conservators in consultation with the artist, Bilyoaks. And Palisades Park continues to experience. In addition, the historic Belmar Park signage has also been tagged several times recently. A few panels were more deeply damaged. We do not think this was done because of the content of the exhibition, as similar damage has occurred at other sites. So these panels are in the process of being printed and will be reinstalled hopefully in early 2022. Moving on to maintenance items. And I don't have a slide for this, sorry, but we did some smaller maintenance projects. With special focus on artworks shown in the budget table of that PDF update that you received. So Untitled by Mark Lear at the Civic Center parking structure is going to need some anti-brass treatment. And the set of red slices of the median by Mauro Staccioli, also untitled. At Nielsen, Ocean and Pico will also require some repair. So this slide is illustrating our deaccession costs. Costs associated with the deaccession of Another Magical Sunset at Santa Monica Beach, the mural at Structure Three. Friendship Fountain, which you'll see here, those panels, recycle, renew, repair, restore mural and Twilight and Yearning, you see here. All those costs were included appraisal consultants, photo documentation, creating and storage, labor for. And some of those costs were carried by the percent for art fund. I'll discuss that next time. But majority of what we're here in the conservation fund. And then we did some special projects, including a small signage project. And we're calling the special project this monthly cleaning at the Belmar, the Belmar signs and artwork. Through to the end of this facility. Not only are they getting tagged, but there's a ton of dust being generated. Stormwater project next door. We also restored an art bank painting, which is currently installed in City Hall. And next slide, we just completed a conservator assessment of the McDonald Wright. Murals over at the main library. This is different from our City Hall murals. So this is actually a long term loan from the Smithsonian. And as a requirement of the loan, we needed to get a conservator in there to assess the condition. And luckily, the things that she noted were pretty minor, but we do expect that we're going to have to address them. To keep the loan going. So that's pretty much everything. And I will turn it back to you, Shannon.
Oh, can I ask a question? I mean. Question?
Absolutely.
Can I gloss over the. Mueller's, the accession, is there any other? Issues at this point around that in terms of how that may be moving ahead with some of the decisions we suggested about. Acknowledging it in different ways?
Where we are now, we are waiting for Mr. Mueller to propose. Project, which he has until, I think, mid-December to give us a proposal. We had asked him also to weigh in on. Plaque or whatever we're going to be doing, so we can take into account his wishes while we. So that's where that's at. They are completely removed.
I assume he didn't, he didn't want them back. They were just, shall we say, recycled, so to speak?
Yes, correct. He did not. He did want the stainless steel. Pieces that were mounting the boats. So he came and picked those up and he said he's going to create a new sculpture out of them. That's great. But rest of it, he did not want.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Other questions? Comments? Bye.
Quite a bit of work you guys are doing. Congratulations. Quite a. Quite a number of things going forward.
Well, it's not the most glamorous of things, conservation, but it's really, really important.
It's, it's what keeps the stuff there. It is important. It's just not, you know. What people think about. But thank you. Thank you so much. Shannon, any closing words or are we ready to close this joint?
No, I think we're ready to close the joint meeting. I would just say our next quarterly is scheduled for February. The third February of the month falls on President's Day, so we'll need to find a new date. I think typically we do it the Monday following. So as we get closer, we will update you and I'll do a poll for who can attend. To find the new date and we'll be in touch if there's any changes or updates around meeting in person, frequency, things like that.
Fantastic. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Our committee, it's great to see you all again. Be well.
Thanks, everyone.
Bye.
Bye.
Bye-bye, Summer. Good to see you.
Bye, friends.
It's great. Well, you guys want to take a, take a stretch break for a minute or just keep going?
Keep going.
Keep going.
All right, good, good. So now we're going to have a special meeting of the Arts Commission. I'm going to. Fall to order, so once again, Nathan, I'm afraid we need to do a roll call. Do we stop recording, by the way, and start it again?
No, I think, I think it's fine.
Yeah, no, we're just keeping the whole thing.
So. Roll call for the commission. Let's see, Commissioner Baroff?
Here.
Commissioner Chalice? Commissioner Jackson? Commissioner Michaels?
Yep.
Commissioner Michaels is here. Commissioner Subramanian?
Yep.
Yes. Commissioner Swimmer?
He was here.
Yep, was here.
I heard a yes. Commissioner Yaya?
Here.
Commissioner Zadikian?
Here.
Thank you very much. Oh, Chair Masucci?
I'm here. Thank you. All right, so before we proceed, is there any public comment? I know we do have one. One guest, any comment from? From Roger?
We've had, I believe we have not received a request, thank comment. I think Roger's just listening.
Thank you so much. All right. What I'm going to briefly talk about.
Um, what I'm going to briefly talk about is something that I, I believe Vice Chair Baroff opened the conversation last meeting, which was, I believe in August, and I couldn't attend because I was stuck in a hurricane in Florida. And we lost power and therefore no internet access. But, um, as, as we'll hear later in this brief but important meeting is that there are pending changes and those changes will affect both the Arts Commission and de facto, therefore also the subcommittees. And I wanted again to urge everybody to consider the, the various subcommittees and participating in them. In a lot of ways, the subcommittees are, to use an old expression, where the action is in the Arts Commission. It's the place where there really is a lot of developmental work, where there's investigative work, where there's outreach and where there is collaboration with community members, many of whom have exemplary expertise. Some of the, the committee members that grace our subcommittees are, you know, serious leaders in their field. And it's a great way to, to build inclusiveness in, in a city that still is grappling with how best to do that. So there are currently four subcommittees. One is what's called a standing committee, which means it has actually uh, very official capacities and even in, it's, it's the public art committee that we just had the honor of working with and they actually have a codified fiduciary responsibility. There's also the Bergamont Ad hoc Committee and you'll hear a brief report from me about that, which is meeting regularly. There is a mural committee whose function is evolving and expanding. And, and there's also the new media arts committee. These are all ad hocks, which means they don't, you know, have all the full stature of a standing committee, nor do they also have to conform to all the rules and regulations. There are both disadvantages and advantages to both of those things. But, um, as you will hear in a few minutes, the, the city council has its own ad hoc subcommittee studying the commissions, all the commissions. And they've been meeting regularly. Vice Chair Baroff and I attended a meeting with them months ago. There have been other meetings. Jeff has, you know, been involved in, of course. And, and they have a number of recommendations, one of which is shrinking the Arts Commission from 11 members, which it has now to nine. There's also talk, but it doesn't seem to have legs, but anything can change to reduce it to seven. Now, in addition to the obvious ramifications of, of the Arts Commission having less members, that would also mandate less community members on the subcommittees. And to me, that's a bridge too far. I, I certainly support reducing the Arts Commission to nine, but I think reducing it to seven will mandate losing some really good community members. On the public art committee, you have, you know, noted architects, you have incredible scholar with Francois, really great people. On the new media art, you know, committee, you have Oscar winning, Emmy award winning, people who literally created the world standards in digital technology. Former heads of VR at USC. To kick some of those people out is, I think, an outrage. And, and I strongly urge us to consider holding the line and holding it at nine, not seven. So that's my two cents and we'll talk about it in a bit. But, um, but first we're going to have a report from Lori on.
Michael, may I ask, say something about committees? Is it also the case that, you know, as, that commissioners can get, can propose starting a committee, correct? If that's what?
Totally.
So I just want to put that in the ear of all the commissioners, that if there's something that is, right word is passion, but something of interest that you would like to initiate, go for it and then, like I said, community members can be gathered in for it. So it's kind of a open-ended kind of opportunity for all commissioners to get, get their interests put into the commission, correct?
I, I couldn't agree more. I mean, yeah, I, I think that's a great point. And, and it's, it's an opportunity for us to be more than reactive, but to be active and to be authors and to be instigators. It doesn't mean we'll get what we want, but, but we will at least have the opportunity to voice a more diverse round of discussions about all things art in the city of Santa Monica. So yes, I applaud what you just said, Michael. I mean, you know, the personal reality is, I, as an arts commissioner, proposed the media arts ad hoc and you guys said yes. So yeah, yeah, that's absolutely a reality. So Lori, tell us about Poliguard.
Well, there's not a lot more to say. We just had your, our brief meeting we had before, which resulted in the motion that you accepted. So no, there's not much to say. We look forward to getting back to regular meetings so we can be more active.
Here, here. The, the Bergamont Ad hoc Committee has been meeting. We recently started a calendar of meeting twice a month. There are some changes at Bergamont, so the Worth Group, which was, they held the master lease starting in January 1st, 2018. Worth were the onsite managers of, of Bergamont and, you know, I thought they did a good job. Their, their contract expires and they have chosen on their own board, they have chosen not to apply for an additional, an additional contract. So they will be leaving Bergamont. They're not just going to flat leave it. They will wait, you know, they will proceed with the transition when new management is in place, they will then hand that over. But, um, but that, that in and of itself will cause some changes. And then also, as, as probably you are aware, Bergamont will evolve in terms of its tenancy. It will also create onsite housing. So Bergamont will become both an art center and a residency for, you know, regular folk. We assume or hope some of those will be artists, but you know, I would imagine largely that won't be the case legally. I can't imagine how that could be the case. But, um, so, but it will still be an art center. But, but that's down the road. New management will deal with that. And in the short term, what the Bergamont Ad hoc is doing is finding new viable, high quality tenants for the several vacancies that do exist. And in a few weeks, we will be interviewing some candidates that were shortlisted and, and hopefully filling some of those empty spaces with some quality, new, exciting people. So Bergamont is alive and well and, and in process and evolving and, and the Bergamont Ad hoc Committee is a place where, you know, there's still a lot of voice and advocacy and actually even in a sense, curatorial advocacy from the Arts Commission. So now, um, we're going to hand it over to Shannon. She's got a lot to tell us. There's a, got quite a list of informative things and thank you all.
Michael. All right. So I'll try and keep this relatively brief. The first is, Michael kind of went into the boards and commissions, what's happening. They're expected to make new appointments or fill, you know, fill any vacancies, I think in December. And there is going to be a council meeting in mid-December where they're going to approve or authorize the recommendations that are going to be put forward by the City Council Ad hoc Committee. So, so we will keep you apprised of that and we're going to talk about it a little bit later in the agenda as well. One thing is in preparation for us to be able to come back together, please submit your vaccination, your proof of vaccination. You should have received an email from, I would assume the clerk with information on how to submit your vaccine requirement. So please do that because we will need that in place before, before the, sorry, I think, Michael, you had some feedback, before we can meet back in person. So if, if you have missed an email about that, let me know and I'll see what I can do. Next up is Art of Recovery. We are getting ready for our next kind of phase of it. We've been, some things in the city are moving pretty slow with budgeting and procurement. And so we're setting up a new system where we have, we will identify production partners, which will be our business districts, other arts groups, community groups that will go under what we, what we're calling a master services agreement. So they will be able to kind of be a pass through of Art of Recovery funded projects and will keep us from having to contract individually with every artist for every project, which is just way onerous and it kind of defeats our purpose of trying to get money in the hands of artists during this really difficult time. So we've relaunched the, a project concept form, which last year was called our Letter of Intent Form, which is a simple form that artists can submit their idea and it'll be reviewed by a panel and then they'll be matched up with one of our production partners and then the full proposal will then be approved by the panel as well. So please share this with your networks. I'll send the link out to everybody with any artists that you know, where we'd love to get submissions and the panel will be reviewing submissions monthly. So in the production partners, RFP, the deadline was last week, so we'll be selecting the production partners in the, tomorrow, I think, and get that piece moving. So we'll get a lot of money on the street or a lot of projects out on the street. We did have the Americana in the park, which was a huge success, a partnership with McCabe's Guitar Shop, which was a wonderful partnership and it was at Gendara, which they're in that neighborhood. So it was a really, a wonderful new model that we've been wanting to do for some time where the city's not necessarily cultural affairs, isn't producing all these events, rather we're providing funding support and technical assistance for other groups to be able to host things in, in public spaces in the city. And it really, it was really nice because what McCabe's found was that they had their people, but then they had the, the old city jazz on the lawn people were there. So they got that audience and vice versa. So there were McCabe's people that never would have gone to jazz on lawn. So it was really a great audience outreach approach as well. So lots more to come with Art of Recovery. And then also in earlier this year, council approved almost $190,000 for emergency relief grants to our local nonprofit arts organizations. And so kudos to Nathan. He put together a very simple and efficient application process and we were able to review them and award 18 arts organizations with funds from the American Rescue Plan Act that had been allocated by city council. And all applicants that applied received funding. And it was, it was, the amount was based on a formula of their budget size, their losses and their need. So a lot of really important support for our arts and culture sector with that relief fund. And then last is the City Hall mural. As you know, we have our, our subcommittee has been meeting. We have a meeting on the calendar every other week. At the, this month's Landmarks Commission meeting, they identified a subcommittee as well of two members, one of which is Roger Denzer. Hi, Roger, who's chair of the Landmarks Commission, but also before former Arts Commissioner and one alternate Landmarks Commissioner. And so this, the Landmarks Commission and the Public Art Committee will be liaisons with a new city council ad hoc committee was created and comprised of Oscar De La Torre and Christine, Christine Para. And so we've had one preliminary meeting with Oscar and Christine to kind of map this out. And now that the landmarks people are involved, we're working internally with how this is going to be structured in terms of all these different bodies and how they're liaising together and what all the different committees are called, because it's getting really confusing because there's so many different committees. So we're doing a lot of internal work to get this system and the structure in place so that we can just really get moving on this in the new year. Any questions for me? Okay.
Thank you so much, Shannon. Oh, so go ahead, Michael. Michael, did you want to say something? Oh, it's Lori.
It's me. I just wanted to say it would be great if we could at some point see, even though it's not in our jurisdiction, just the groups that were given the Art of Recovery, then it, it'd just be nice to see whether, you know, who got supported.
Oh, yes, absolutely. And we actually have, were hoping to give you a really full, robust Art of Recovery report, but the consultant had a conflict tonight. So we have it on the list and we're actually doing a kind of compilation of video that will be out soon. So I'll send that around and also doing kind of final report forms with our grantees. We'll get a lot of data through that as well that will. Thank you, Lori.
Fantastic. Thank you so much. Any other comments, questions? Anybody? All right. Then moving on to the last item of, of the night, which we sort of began the conversation on. So the, the council will be considering the reduction in size of the Arts Committee. Now, in many ways, that makes perfect sense. It would harmonize it more in keeping with the other existing commissions, some of which are significantly smaller than us. Um, you know, you know, seven. But, um, the discussion we've had is that nine does seem like a fair, equitable and more potentially inclusive number to, to advocate for. So I know several of the commissioners, myself included, as private citizens, have written emails or letters, or I believe in one case it was a phone call to either the council writ large or individual members advocating for the nine number rather than seven and not to pat ourselves on the back, but I, I believe that that did have some influence on taking off the converse, taking off the table, the seven number, which I think is a radical proposal. So, um, there is the idea that the Arts Commission could, as a group formally communicate with the city council and the normative structure for doing that is that the Arts Commission would ask the chair, i.e. me, to write a letter on behalf of the commission advocating for a certain idea. So that's, um, that's the, the proposal here to see if the Arts Commission wants to formally say, no, we don't want seven. We believe nine is real and cite the various reasons that, you know, have been discussed in. So that's up for discussion if anyone wants to chime in. Go ahead.
I, I'm just curious, why is it that the Arts Commission is set up with 11 people?
Well, it's a historical thing. It just, it, it evolved that way. It, it's not in keeping with other, other groups, but, um, that even, that predates my tenure. There, it's been for quite a while at this number.
And it used to be even larger. I think Nathan might know is, I think 13?
It was 13 when I joined. It was 13. Yes. Which is, you know, there, there was no advantage to, to more. There were, there was no advantage. It also, uh, you know, I think the previous, the even predates, uh, ex-chair Myers, I believe the chair before him, sort of grew the, grew the commission and it just stayed that way for now.
The, the, yeah, the commission itself, uh, requested to go down from 13 to 11. It seemed unwieldy.
That's correct.
One thing that we may, um, or you may want to, um, include in the letter, there has been conversation about, um, changing, right now with the arts commission, you have to live or work in Santa Monica. And I know that there has been discussion about changing it. So it's, you have to live in Santa Monica to serve on the arts commission. And it, and I'm not saying, um, well, I, because most commissions in the city, it's a live requirement. It's not live work. I think because the arts are specialized and we require that arts professionals are on the arts commission. I think that is, um, a, a point that could be made, that we need, um, it to continue to be live work because it allows us to have greater diversity and have greater reach into arts professionals, uh, that are connected to the city. So, um, just wanted to throw that out there as another possible topic that could be included in the letter.
Question? Go ahead. That, that particular issue was not part of any of the rec, formal recommendations. What, what, correct? That's something you're bringing into this conversation, but it wasn't something that was on their agenda, so to speak. Correct?
Uh, it, I, it has come up and I think that it may be part of the, uh, final recommendations. I don't know that it's been published anywhere. I haven't seen it published, but it may come up in the final, um, recommendations.
Yeah, I just took, yeah, I don't see it. Thank you.
Well, with that heads up, I think it would be good to be proactive and, and make our position on that clear. And I, I would totally support what Shannon just said.
I would too. And I would say that that's actually in line with other cities that are specific for, it's usually sustainability and art that are considered, they want to have people with specialties. And so they go a little, you know, further external to people working in the city as well.
And, um, go ahead. Not to suggest that this be brought into this particular letter, but, but, what the council has also had conversations about, and they've changed it over the years, is how commissioners are appointed, obviously by the city council and by, by those who, um, put in formal applications. But, but there's some point about how the public or others can make recommendations, ad hoc, so to speak, to suggest who may be a preferable selection. I mean, it's not suggesting we put that into this letter, but that's been part of their ongoing conversations because that did come up in those, in that, in that, their task group meeting. And it's still something that's kind of, I think they're still grappling with.
Yeah. I, I agree, not, not for this letter, but it is a, it is an interesting point. We, we have to be real that, you know, things like this, it's an insider's game. I'm of the vintage that I, there used to be a subcommittee of the arts commission that would be empowered to recommend potential commissioners. And that's how I came on board. I didn't apply for the arts commission. I got an email from someone, a, a former commissioner, Ed Horowitz, saying, "I've asked around about who might be interesting people and your name came up a number of times. Would you like to join?" And to be honest, I had, I didn't know what the arts commission was. But it was a way where it was more, it was outreach where regardless of my effectiveness or lack thereof, um, I would have never been on the arts commission, with the process that exists today. And, um, and, and I think that a, a hybrid scenario where there is a committee of arts commissioners that are asking people in the community, well, who's, you know, who's doing what, you know, as well as trying to find ways to get the community to know. Because the reality is anyone can apply, you know, but they have to know that anyone can apply. And in a strange way, all that information is not well-publicized. And, um, and I think the way we're going to get the best and most diverse and, and brightest and most creative people is an all of the above scenario. But I think that's another conversation. But, um, but thank you. I, 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 I think we should have a seat at the table as to advising who might be good.
Right.
And, and everyone else should too.
Right. And again, just that, and there's no prohibition from any individual, be it a commissioner or an individual to call or email the, the council with your, or to voice your opinions. I mean, I think I even during the top, as I recall, because I listened to it, I thought when the commissioners do make their, um, appointments, there's also the opportunity for people to call in. And I know that occurred last time and people called in to advocate for people. So I'm just putting that out there as a as an informal opportunity to have our, anyone's voice heard about who might be a preferable appointee.
I agree.
Michael?
Yes, go ahead, Deepa.
Isn't that a public call for arts commissioners? Is that, isn't that the, isn't that a part of the protocol? I mean, that, isn't that how people actually apply for?
Yeah, it's, but who knows about it? I mean, I didn't know about it.
I didn't know about it either.
It's an, that's my point. It's an insider's game. Yes, in theory, anyone can do it, but you have to know it exists to apply. Anyone can apply if they know anyone can apply. And I think that's not well-known information. It's my suspicion. Go ahead, Mary Elizabeth.
No, um, I don't disagree with you. I think it's, it's fascinating to know that you didn't apply and, and this discussion about the hybrid. I mean, the other thing maybe in the interim before that is that we as individuals, commissioners or not, can recommend that people apply. So in Burbank, I did that, uh, several times where, you know, I was in the community and knew a lot of, um, people who I thought would be a good fit. And so I recommended to them that they apply. Um, and then when I did that, I actually went in front of the council and spoke on their behalf and sent emails to the city council members. But we, I wouldn't say doing this officially, but as individuals, you can help sort of spread the word. And then maybe.
It's individuals, yes, but I'm advocating in addition to individuals, a formal
I understand.
A formal recommendation, which they don't have to take. But having the seal that a subcommittee found some people, took it to the arts commission. The arts commission said, yeah, that would be.
And I don't agree. I just, uh, I'm thinking sort of in the interim, um, because, you know, we're not meeting monthly. So it's, it, and timing of things, and I don't know.
It only happens when there's vacancies.
Yeah. So, um, let me ask another question. Shannon, so we have an opening right now, right? That would be filled the next time that they do it. Does it make sense to see if that can be postponed in case they decide that, oh, they're going to eliminate two positions on the commission? It might make sense to not have brought somebody new on and then figure out how, like, how do they decide who, which two people will no longer be a part of? And doesn't it make sense to maybe not bring a final person on until we know what's going on?
Yeah, they're waiting to make appointments until after they do this, um, until after they act. So right now we have four openings, um, on the arts commission.
Oh.
Because Rosio and, um, Angela had to leave for various reasons. And then Michael Masucci and Jeff Swimmer are up for reappointment. So basically it would mean that Rosio and Angela's spots would not be filled. And ostensibly, Michael and Jeff would be reappointed.
Okay. I knew about Rosio.
But then we'd be at nine.
Thank you.
Any other discussion? Okay. Deepa, did you?
Yeah, I have a strange suspicion that the last time when the commissioners were appointed, they, it was brought to the, uh, you know, it was consulted with the arts commission, existing arts commission. And I remember we, uh, sort of voted, I mean, uh, sort of recommended or, uh, put our votes on, you know, whether they are, uh, you know.
Yeah.
I remember we did that, uh, the last time.
But not anymore. That's.
Uh, yeah.
Lori.
Sorry. Do, do we need to make a motion to request Chair Masucci to write a letter on behalf of the, uh, commission?
Yes.
I'd like to make that motion, uh, requesting Chair Masucci to write a letter expressing, uh, the commission's strong, uh, preference for, uh, a reduction to nine and not seven for all the reasons that he expressed.
A second.
Okay. So there is a motion that has been raised and seconded.
Did anyone want to consider a motion about the live work requirement being included?
Uh, I'll amend it to include that, the live work, that, that we would like to retain the live work.
I'll second the amended recommendation.
All right. Uh, do we need a roll call or can we just do hands? It's a small group.
It's not money, so I think it's a acclamation.
Exactly. All right. All in favor of the, uh, proposal?
Say aye, because we can't hear everything.
Aye.
Yeah.
Any nays? Nay, nay? All right. Thank you. I will write a letter. Um, Shannon, what is the most, uh, judicious timeframe for submitting the letter? Because I know timing matters with these people.
Yeah, I think it is, there's a number of meetings. So let me, um, let me look, uh, at it. But, you know, if you prepare it, then we can have it ready for whatever.
For sure. For sure. Um, all right.
Because usually it's best like a couple of days before the meeting.
Okay. So, uh, not to gavel late night, the last thing on the agenda is minutes.
Can I interrupt for just a second? Was that, was that, um, uh, Mary Elizabeth who was seconded?
Yes.
Yes, it was.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you, Nathan. Um, so, uh, any motion to approve the minutes? I wasn't at the last meeting, so I can't vote.
Kathleen, looks like, raise your hand.
Oh, um, I moved to approve the minutes in the meeting. Excuse me. I seconded.
And Deepa seconds? Okay, I have to abstain, but, um, all in favor, who attended the, uh, meeting?
Aye.
Aye.
Any nays?
I did too, I think.
Yeah, I did.
You were there. Okay. All right. So, uh, the, the minutes have been approved. Thank you. Thank you all very much. And, um, with that, uh, if there is no reason not to, I will adjourn.
Yeah, Michael, if I, if I could just really briefly, just to note again, well, the next meeting is, uh, planned for February. We don't know if it'll be in person or not. And I'll, we'll need to change the date because right now it's on a holiday. So I'll be in touch about that. And then the second, I just wanted to, um, call out and give a congrats to Jeff Swimmer, who released a documentary, um, and I think it won, it won an award or something, right, Jeff?
Come on, Jeff, tell us about it.
And this will link.
Congratulations.
Yeah, congratulations. And congratulations to Deepa for her exhibit that she curated at Bergamot.
Whoa. Yes, go check out Deepa's, uh, exhibition at BG Gallery in Bergamot.
Unfortunately, Shannon, today was the last day.
Oh, no!
It was just a, uh, short three-day affair, yeah.
Okay.
Jeff, can you tell us the title of the documentary or at least the, the subject matter, if you would, or where we can see it? Jeff?
Jeff?
Seems to.
Amy went?
Maybe he walked away. He's missing all the love.
Yeah. I have to say goodbye, everyone.
And I just like to report, and I would just like to report that after, uh, two weeks, two years of waiting because of COVID, um, three scholars from France associated with the Pompidou and the Cinématique de France say, are arriving in early December for a month to study Easy TV's. They have been wanting to do this for two years. It's been on again, off again, on again, off again. They were fully vaxxed and they still couldn't get visas. Now, the US government has allowed people from other parts of the world who are fully vaxxed to come. So, uh,
That's amazing, Michael.
They will be arriving, uh, the, the first one arrives December 7th and then to the two others on the 12th. And boy, has that been a long process involving the consulates and congressmen and just like nobody could open the door. So, um, I'm happy to say that's happening. And, um, if anybody's interested, on December 9th, Easy TV is throwing a 42nd anniversary in-person party. We have to restrict the numbers of people, but, um, but it should be wild anyway. Thank you all. Yeah.
Thank you. Thank you guys.
Thank you, Shannon.
Thank you, Jonathan. Thank you, Lori. And thanks, Michael.
Thank you, everyone.
Thank you.
Talked for you, Michael. Good night.